First item on agenda is a little unusual for us, but we need to bring item number 14 to be considered at this time, as to consider adoption of the electronic meeting policy.
Move approval to move it up.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion?
I have, all that policy.
Yes, sir.
It is unclear, I wish I could find it here, as to the quorum.
Just to move it up.
Now, we have a quorum, and that policy contradicts itself. Does anybody else agree with that?
We're not into discussion.
This is to move it up to discussion now. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Everyone is in favor of moving it up to consider now. Now it's open for discussion. Mr. Bramble.
There is an internal conflict, and it says, and I wish you know what.
It's Chris, it's here in the back, look for your yellow.
It should be tabbed.
Look for your yellow sticky.
Do you see it? Tab, you got it right there.
Yes, okay. Let's go back to the, well, to the front page of that. And there's a place there that says... Two places where it addresses a quorum. I know where the second one is, under quorum. It says, "Members present in person or electronically shall be included in the calculation for determining if a quorum exists." At the beginning here somewhere, it says that the quorum has to be present.
It's under number two, in that first paragraph, I think Chris is what you're referring to. That first paragraph, under number two?
Right.
The next, the last line. "A member desiring to participate electronically must first confirm with the clerk and/or her designee that there is going to be a quorum physically present."
That's what I mean, they're the two conflicts there.
So you're questioning outside number?
Where is the second one at?
Under number four.
Under quorum.
Under quorum.
It says, "Members present in person or electronically shall be included in the calculation for determining if a quorum exists." But in the earlier part, it says you can only be not present if you have determined that there is a quorum physically present.
Point of order? Should we have outside number four as the quorum, number two? Is that what you're thinking?
I'm not.
And move number?
I'm not sure the quorum ought to be, I think the quorum ought to be physically present. I'll be honest with you.
And that's the intent of this policy, is to have a quorum physically present, therefore allowing others who don't count as a quorum to participate in the meeting.
Up to three of us could participate outside the meeting. We'd have to have four people here to have a meeting.
Isn't that what the school government said, was up there? Their guidance?
Right, our intent is to have, and I think Councilmember Bramble is right, there's a conflict. Our intent is to make sure that there are, under the current general statutes, that we have a quorum physically present. It doesn't mean that a number up to three, which is above the quorum, cannot participate electronically, that's what we want to allow, but there needs to be a physical quorum present.
So wouldn't that first sentence on number four, that you don't want electronically, you must be present to be included in the calculation, right? For determining if a quorum exists. So the electronically portion, I guess, would be?
Strike or electronically.
Yeah, I think that would take care of it.
You have to be in person to be counted in the quorum.
I just have one other concern. Do we need some sort of clause in this policy for closed session? You know, for somebody that's chiming in electronically to exclude them from closed session? Because I don't think we should allow them to participate in discussion matters while we're in closed session.
Because we are not sure who or what.
I agree. Okay, I will entertain a motion that we strike or electronically, and add a section that for closed sessions, they will not be able to participate electronically.
Number eight would be that.
Okay, and we will go ahead and approve this, so Ms. Louder can join us in tonight's meeting. And then if we need to amend it again, we will amend it at another meeting. Is that, I entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
So I guess.
Councilmember Bramble makes the motion, second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Ms. Hardy, do you will allow Ms. Louder to join our meeting electronically?
Yes, Mayor, she's on the line.
Councilmember Louder, you're in, you're on the line?
I'm not here.
Okay, all other prep council members are present in the chambers, so will we move forward? Our country faces one of the most challenging times in our history. The problems we face will test our patience and our strength, if we are to emerge from this stronger and determined. You are doing what is necessary to protect loved ones, friends, and fellow citizens. When you hear from us, we are asking you to follow the guidelines we are receiving from the public health professionals. None of us in this room are professionals in public health. We are in contact with the health experts in order that we may provide information to you about this pandemic. Recent data is showing that what you, our citizens, are doing is making a difference in how our community is doing. Even one death is one too many. We need you to continue to practice social distancing, maintaining at least six feet between you and others. Wash your hands with soap and water for 20 seconds, and use hand sanitizer frequently. Regularly clean high-touch surfaces, and wear a face mask when in public. Tonight, our city council is practicing social distancing, and you will see less than 10 people in this meeting. We hope to have a short meeting, and our only meeting because we have some business that needs a timely decision. As one of our council members said earlier when we were talking, government must continue to function. We are using multiple sources for electronic meetings, and will allow public comment from those who have indicated they wish to speak in this format. We have council members that will be participating in this matter. We want to say thank you to all of you for what you are doing to protect your family, friends, and other community members. Please continue to follow the health guidelines, and let's all work together. I invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, our world is in need of the touch of Your healing hands for all of the people sick and suffering from this dreaded disease. We ask for comfort for those family and friends coping with the loss of a loved one. Lead us to reach out to others to show comfort, compassion, and respect. Guide us as individuals to help those in need. Let us remember the families who need food and assistance. Let us assist the children so they will have the meals needed, to allow them to expand their minds and learn at home until we can get back in school. We have asked to be leaders in our community, and need you to show us the way to lead our city in this time of sickness, death, and depression. We ask this in Your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Councilmembers, the third item on our agenda is approval of minutes. Consider approval of the March 3, 2020 adjourned and closed session minutes, and March 16, 2020 regular and closed session. On your, that's corrected. On your table tonight, you have an amended copy of some errors that were seen in the minutes, and we need to adopt it with that. I have a motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bramble. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, Councilmember Aldridge makes the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Louder, I need to record you. Ms. Louder?
I responded, aye.
Okay, I will have to ask you individually on each vote, since you're electronically. Those opposed?
Okay.
Motion carries. Anyone have any agenda adjustments? Have no, announced delegations? Your administrative reports are in your agenda, departmental monthly reports, anyone have any question?
Just thank the department heads for getting them to us and everything being in here with all that's going on.
Your municipal calendar is in your agendas, anyone have any question? Under consent agenda, I do have one addition in the consent agenda that your council has on their table tonight, where it talks about the change order for sanitary sewer. You have that, but you also have the architect's part of that change order. It's all grouped together, but you have a copy of that at your desk tonight. Anyone have anything on the consent agenda they would like to pull off with that addition?
I don't have anything I'd like to pull off, but just as a question, what accommodations did staff make for the public hearing during the five-year agency plan for public housing?
Do not know that I can answer that. Mr. Ferris, can you answer that? Since that occurred at the public housing office, and I do not know.
And I can find out later on. I was just curious, as I read the description, I know a public hearing was required, and the staff did make note that they made accommodations. I was just curious what.
I cannot answer what.
I can find out at a later time.
But I think I'd like all of us to know that, though. Good question.
We will get that answer.
Council, this is, can you guys hear me? This is Nikki. Are you talking about accommodations for social distancing?
Yes, yes, at the public hearing.
Okay, so staff made sure to set up the room so that participants were six feet apart at a minimum, and no one showed up for the 10 o'clock public hearing. I believe two attendees did show up for the afternoon public hearing.
Okay, so they were allowed to attend. Okay, appreciate it, Nikki.
Yes, they were allowed to physically attend, and they just made sure that they were six feet apart.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Further questions? I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes, and that includes the architect's adjustment on his changes.
Correct.
Okay, Councilmember Hughes made the motion, Councilmember Hall made the second, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Under new business, we've already handled the electronic meeting policy. Number 15, recommendation from our benefits broker. I believe our HR director is going to join us by phone here to explain that to us.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor, City Council, can you hear me? This is Dana Chaney.
Speak up just a little bit, please.
Okay, is that a little better, Mayor?
Hang on just a minute, we're trying to adjust the volume.
Okay.
It is full for her now.
Mayor, Mayor, this is Nikki, if I could interrupt for one second, Councilmember Louder just raised her hand. I'm not sure if she wants to make comments.
Thank you, Ms. Louder, I did need to ask you about your vote on the last vote, how did you vote? Councilmember Louder?
For the motion.
Thank you. Did you have anything else?
No.
Thank you. Okay, continue on, Ms. Chaney.
Okay, can you hear me now, Mayor?
We can.
Okay, all right, you have in your packet a presentation, and I'm just going to walk you through that. And if you do have any questions, we definitely want to address those for you here this evening. We submitted a request for proposal in February to try to find someone to manage and assist us in managing our overall health insurance and employee benefits program. We requested proposals from a variety of interested consultants to, you know, give us information on medical, dental, all of our insurance plans that we provide. And we just want someone to continue to help us negotiate with the actual carriers. Our overall goal for this RSP is to enter into a long-term relationship with this organization to get brokerage services. And we want to do that in the most efficient and cost-effective manner that is available to us. Compensation for these broker services will be primarily through a combination of broker fees paid by the insurance carriers. And the city looked at a variety of proposals, but we wanted to make sure that they understood, you know, we were looking for service and not base our decisions solely upon price. So we distributed the RSP February the 4th, and we gave folks an opportunity to give us questions by the 14th of February. We responded back to those questions. All the proposals were submitted to us by the 28th. We did interviews with selected brokers on March the 17th, made our final selection on March the 31st. And now we're obviously recommending that to you, and we would like to begin implementation as soon as possible. We had eight proposals that were received from our RSP. We selected the four finalists you see there for interviews. NFP is our existing benefit broker on the medical plan. Custom Benefit Solutions is our broker right now for all the other health plans, dental, vision, life insurance, or everything else that NFP is not. The two new brokers that we chose to interview were Pierce Group and One Digital. And we selected those folks based on their response to our detailed RSP. We then brought together an interview panel of members from across the city. Colleen Conroy, our finance director, Jacob Weevil, our assistant finance director, Lisa Kaiser, the Parks and Recreation director, Giovanni Spetti, our IF analyst. And then, of course, myself and Leslie Kinley, the HR analyst, were also present for the interviews. We then asked the folks that participated in those interviews to provide scoring on each of those presentations and the discussion that was held with those different firms. And you see on the next slide how the scores broke out. Custom Benefit Solutions had an interview score of 39, NFP 66. So it basically came down to Pierce Group with a score of 75, or One Digital with an interview score of 79. Myself as the HR director, I did not score the finalists, so those scores did not have my feedback. Based on those scoring, I then did reference checks on those One Digital and NFP from existing municipalities. And based on that, we would like to recommend One Digital to you this evening. One Digital, we felt really listened to us. I've included one of the slides from their presentation, that seems to be one of their strengths. They want to provide greater choice, enhanced employee education, introduce more benefits technology, really be more thorough in cost management and transparency for our organization. Help us to consolidate our open enrollment. This is a major consideration for us, because right now we have two enrollment periods, and we'd like to get it to one. They would like to provide us with additional professional guidance to ensure that we get the best cost, service, and coverage. The next slide really shows what their hope is for us and what our hope is as an organization. Currently, we have the self-funded medical plan, only a single PPO option. We have a lot of carriers for vision and dental and life insurance and different things. We have the two open enrollments I referenced. We do most everything through paper, and now, as we all know, we're facing the COVID-19 pandemic, which is really causing a lot of work for us all during this time. But we've already begun to turn to One Digital for education in regards to COVID-19, and we're interested to partner with them because of the opportunity they see for us to better manage our self-funding efforts and really contain our costs overall. We'd like to consider maybe offering some type of high-deductible health plan to give people an option as opposed to the PPOs, if that fits their life stage. We'd like to partner with a broker to do some additional evaluation of our carriers, ensure that we're meeting all of our compliance objectives, and really make sure that we're providing great value to our employees on those voluntary benefits. So what we'd like to do is really look at that captive assessment, you know, who are our high costs, or where are our high-cost efforts happening, and really pull those into a captive-type plan. Look at our pharmacy spend, which has been the part of our program that's increasing most. Look at a holistic well-being program that supports the whole employee, not only health, but also financial and other benefits. And really look at helping people prepare strategically for their retirement as they approach that in their lives. So it's just a overall more strategic approach to benefits. The next slide really outlines a key thing that we like about this firm, in that they look at an employee's overall well-being, physical, of course, but also financial, the community, social, emotional, and purpose. And looking at that strategically, and providing resources to employees for each of those layers of their persona. The next slide shows references that we collected, government and municipalities that currently partner with One Digital. The municipalities, Southern Pines, Fire City, Huntersville, Lenore, they have a very large presence in Virginia. So I spoke at length to some folks at Danville, Virginia, who have been working with One Digital for about 12 years. Have some counties and schools that they're also working with. So finally, our next steps, we would like to recommend that we move forward with One Digital. Pending your approval of that this evening, we would then move forward with client onboarding and discussing our overall goals and long-term benefit strategy. That would include a comprehensive review of our claims and a wellness strategy. So we would move pretty quickly with that, so that we can meet our renewal in May. And that renewal would obviously look at an overall financial review, we would notify carriers, and then come up with an enrollment strategy for our employee base.
Council, anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions, and I'm ready to move forward on it, but I do have a question, once it's approved, moving forward. Just some, has nothing to do with the proposal in front of us, but it does with something she just said.
I have a couple of questions about that, too. I'll entertain a motion if the council's ready to move forward.
That we enter into an agreement with One Digital?
Motion by Councilmember Hall to move forward with an agreement with One Digital, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Louder?
Aye.
Thank you. See you in a minute. You want to bring that up now, or?
I think so, Dana's here. So Dana, one of the things that I've just heard you say that I had been anxious to get, and you and I have talked about it, is that comprehensive financial overlook or outlook, where we are now and where we expect to be self-funded. And I know that things have been really crazy around everywhere, particularly with getting this in front of us, and I don't, you don't have to give it to me right now, but I really am anxious to figure out where we are with our self-funding this, because I know we've got several, several high, very high, almost catastrophic amounts of folks out there with some, with some big issues. And I'd like to know where we are financially with that.
Yes, Martha Sue, and that's one reason we wanted to go with this organization in particular, is because of their experience with the self-funded plans. They seem to have a greater level with the self-funding than the other vendor that we were comparing them against, and we expect to have that soon. They are going to be doing a claims review as soon as possible.
That sounds great, Ms. Chaney, because I, too, am going to have a few questions about rate design and things like that, as we move forward.
Yes, sir.
May I follow up?
Yes.
So Dana, we're entering into, and I may have seen this, and I don't think I did, when are we entering into this? As of July 1, or can we go ahead and get something right now, so they can start working on it?
We're going to go ahead and get something right now. We can, with council's approval, we can now issue letters of record to make One Digital our broker of record. And we can go ahead and start with our next open enrollment for One Digital to be our broker. And they are prepared to negotiate on our behalf, and have already begun brainstorming some things on that end.
May I follow up? So our current broker, when and how do we break it off?
When we send those broker of record notices, that will break it off.
Okay. Because we've been dealing with them for how long?
Roughly 30 years, is my understanding.
I just want my fellow council members to hear that, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Chaney.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council.
Council, moving on to number 16, designation of a voting delegate for the North Carolina League Annual Business Meeting. This is going to be an electronic meeting, but they, we will have someone that wants to be voting delegate will need to vote before that electronic meeting is actually held. We will find out who is the slate of candidates, you will vote and send it in before they have the electronic meeting, because they will announce at the electronic meeting who the new officers are.
Are you just voting for the officers? What about?
No, there's a, I'm, Mayor, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm serving on the nominations committee again, okay? So we had our first meeting electronically two weeks ago, with one tomorrow. One of the things will be voting on the slate of officers, but there are a couple of things, other things in there that we may end up having to deal with, okay? Not we, nominating, but we, to vote. And there'll be a period of time, about a week in there, that all a person has to do is to go vote in that period of time. So, I mean, it could be anybody to do it.
Mr. Townsend has done it for the last several years.
That's why it's been physical presence.
And is he comfortable doing it? If he is, we'll let him do it.
You have any, how soon this will be doing?
I know, they've already given us a date, hang tight, one second. But, and as I'm looking it up, the actual meeting itself is, and this has come out in some things, some information, I think, to everybody. It's a virtual business on the 28th of May, which is a Thursday. But, if my understanding is correct, you'll have a period of time of about a week prior to that to vote.
I entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Townsend. Motion by Councilmember Bramble.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ms. Louder?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you Dexter for taking that. And number 17 is introduction, our renewed housing director. I hate that he did not be here tonight to do that, but I have had the opportunity to meet him one time, coming in and out the back door. I don't know if any of the rest of you have met him, but I look forward to us getting back to normal, so we can actually meet him one-on-one in person. Mr. Ferris, you got comments?
Sure, just a couple introductory comments. We've all, I've shared with council about the process we went through to find, you know, our next housing director, which is Lee Stateon. And a part of that process is to make sure that they're the right person for us, and we're the right person for them, and Lee has hit the ground running, starting about three weeks ago. And of course, it's very unusual circumstances, you know, the fact that we're doing introductions via electronic methods rather than him here in person. So if you can imagine, being a new housing director to a new agency, and then trying to deal with routine issues, business issues, and then dealing with the COVID-19 issues. It's been a unique starting period for Lee, but he's hit the ground running and tackling some very much-needed projects, and I'm just glad to have him on board. So after, at this point, I'll turn it over to Lee to allow him to make a few comments.
Lee?
Thank you, Walter. Hello, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I know it doesn't take a rocket fire to realize that I've come into this position during a unique period. However, I do want to thank Mr. Ferris, and Ms. Hardy, and the other members of the management team for the opportunity, and their support of further and decent, safe, and affordable housing in the city of Albemarle. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
Anyone have any questions, are they?
Looking forward to meeting.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Glad to have you on board.
Hopefully you can hear that, Lee, everyone saying, "Welcome aboard, looks forward to working with you." We thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone have any roundtable items?
Just two little things, but not little things, but first of all, I'll just say that the lights at the new police station look great.
I do like, they do look good.
I think I seen them last Thursday and Friday, so they look real good. And the only other thing I was going to mention is... And the only other thing I was gonna mention is, you know, obviously, you know, we dealing with some uncertain times, dealing with the COVID-19, but you never know what a community is made of until you face situations like this. And I can say, you know, Stanley County, Alvinmore, you know, we definitely a resilient community. As I think back over the different things that people have done, you know, I'm really proud of our, you know, they don't always get the best publicity, but our school system, in particular, they've done outstanding job over the past few weeks. And then we had the businesses and restaurants and individuals donating time and delivering meals and things of that nature. I just say, no, and also thanks to our city staff and other health officials and throughout the entire county. You know, everybody been doing a magnificent job, and makes me proud to call Alvinmore home.
I think we should all be proud of what everybody's done to step up and make sure everyone had available food during, especially during the holidays when the school system was not there. But the Christian Ministries reached out a plea for some help, and a lot of people have responded to help them with their food bank outside. Anyone else have anything?
Just to our city staff, you know, our city staff, each of them is an essential employee because each of them is connected to some service that the city does. And I was on a prayer conference Zoom call this morning, and one of the folks that was on that doesn't even live in the city, but goes to our church, and this person said, you know, our essential employees are not just fire and rescue. They're the folks that keep that water on, or when my lights went out the other day, they came back out, came back and put them back on. So people are acknowledging that, so a big adage to them, and may they stay safe out there and go home with their families and keep them safe as well. Back to your comment about the SCCM, you all have, may have known, may know this, may have read it on Facebook, may have heard it out in the public. They are feeding or preparing or not preparing, well, they are preparing food every day like they usually do with the tables. Community Inn is still feeding folks, but SCCM is providing food for hundreds of families each week, many more than they've ever dealt with. Folks are coming down there who would never have found themselves needing that kind of help. So anything that you've got, they take all donations on Mondays and Wednesdays. Tuesdays and Thursdays, they have a drive-up, you go in and you get your box and they put it in the trunk. So if anybody's got anything to donate, they will take on Mondays and Wednesdays. Thanks.
And just to go along with what Councilmember Hall said, in overall, I think this coming Thursday.
Thursday.
At three o'clock, yes. Whatever time, I think they have a food bank coming, and I think they're giving out fifty pounds of food to three hundred. The first three hundred.
That's right, that's exactly right.
Again, thank you to everyone, thank you to our staff, thank you to all of our citizens for what you're doing and staying at home and doing the necessary precautions to help us get through this. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn to our May fourth meeting because we are going to cancel the April twenty-seventh work session. We do not need to do that during this time, it's not urgent, so we'll move to our next regular scheduled meeting on May the fourth. So, motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Lauter?
Oops, I do have one announcement.
All opposed?
I do have one announcement for you to adjourn.
You can say it, we're officially adjourned, so it can't be unofficial.
No, but here goes, y'all need to hear this, that the Special Events Committee for the city met on a Zoom call last week, and we are going, we are planning three different events at City Lake Park on the Fridays, the first, second, and fourth Fridays in June, barring that we can, that we can still do it. But it's gonna be bringing, having the food trucks and entertainment and games out at City Lake Park on three different Friday meetings, because we know that when this finally kicks up, you know, we are able to move and to go, people are gonna want things to do. So please know that we've got committees that are still working, and that will be the first, second, and fourth Friday nights in June.
Honorable Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Didn't recognize me in the circle, and I had something to say, okay?
I'm sorry?
It's quite all right. I wondered, like everybody else did, what was going on on Fifty-two North, and I thought it was taking a considerable amount of time. However, when I saw the distance of where they had to dig and repave it, I think they need to be commended for getting it done as soon as they did. That was a lot of work.
They did a good job, again, I've had a lot of thanks to our, our staff for that, thank you for saying that also.
You're welcome.